Welcome, everyone. I now call the January 9th, 2024 regular City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
The City of Bothell provides the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say "here" when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Here.
Councilmember Kerr?
Here.
Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, and mute your microphone when not speaking. First up on our agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities. We've got the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service Planting Event. You can celebrate the life and work of Dr. King by volunteering to make our community a better place at a planting event with Whale Scout and the city. It's January 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the former Wayne Golf Course. We've also got the Park at Bothell Landing Conceptual Design Survey. You can help shape the future of Park at Bothell Landing by taking a short survey. It's open until February 18th. All right, next up, we have a proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And Councilmember Aldrich is going to read this proclamation. I'm going to kick it over to her.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day is celebrated every third day in January as a time to, sorry, every third Monday in January as a time to remember and celebrate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas Dr. King, along with countless advocates and activists for racial and intersectional forms of justice, made significant contributions to the civil rights movement of the 1960s and impacted the course of American history. And whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day is the only federal holiday designated as a national day of service, meant to encourage all Americans to contribute to building a beloved community through unity, service, and transformation. And whereas Martin Luther King Day provides the opportunity to honor Dr. King's legacy by working towards a more just and equitable society in which every community member is valued on the basis of their race, ethnicity, culture, religion, abilities, gender, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic status. And whereas the City of Bothell is proud to offer opportunities to engage in service activities locally and provide resources to learn more about the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Now, therefore, I, Jenny Aldrich, on behalf of Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim January 15th, 2024, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Bothell, and encourage every one of our community members to participate in a personally meaningful service project so that we can eradicate injustice and create lasting change that will contribute to building our beloved, beloved community here in Bothell.
Thank you. And I believe we have Ava Thomas, the Executive Director of Racial and Educational Justice for the North Shore School District, to accept and say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson and the City of Bothell, for having me here. Oh, thank you. Thank you. For having me here today. I just want to share some words, and I typed it out so I would stay on script. So I'd first like to start by reminding ourselves of Dr. King's message and honor his legacy. King was an advocate and activist for racial justice. He wanted people to love one another, but not despite our racial identities, but because of them. And just as much as King fought for racial justice, he also fought against war and inequitable socioeconomic structures and for a, quote, "redistribution of political and economic power." What is not as commonly known is that youth played a significant role in organizing during the Civil Rights Movement. For example, youth are the ones who played a fundamental role in organizing the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom. The Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee and Congress for Racial Equality came together and reached out to the NAACP and the Southern Christian Leadership Conference to establish national momentum and to organize the march. So Dr. Martin Luther King is not the one who organized that march. Instead, youth are the one who organized it originally and then spread that momentum across the nation. So the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee also wrote John Lewis's speech during that march, which is where he expressed their demands to the public. In times of today, I continue to see youth organizing, getting involved, and using their voices, and leadership for change across the nation and even locally. Within my context, it is not enough for adults or individuals of positions of power to be the ones to decide when and how they will pass the mic to Black people, communities, or youth. We must shift power to disrupt oppression and provide the space, tools, and resources for Black youth and communities to take the mic, create their own tables, and have their own say. I like to say that my job is to work with, not for, our students and communities. Also, speaking of community, it is a time, as it has always been the time, to nurture King's message and legacy. In this time, as it has always been the time, it's also critical to work together to cultivate futures that genuinely include each and every person on the basis of each of their intersectional identities. And lastly, it is the time, as it has always been, to join hands and cultivate a current reality that allows us to directly build solidarities and act change-making and generate healing across each of our communities. I'd like to thank you, the City of Bothell and Mayor Thompson, for this proclamation and for the continued commitment to this important work to fight for justice. Thank you.
What? I didn't know.
You guys were facing this way.
Oh, that's funny. All right, next up, we have public comment. The City has accepted public comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We do not have anybody signed up to speak this evening. However, if there's anybody in the audience tonight who wishes to speak, please step to the podium, give your name, and we all have three minutes. And I don't have anybody in the virtual audience either.
Fantastic, thank you. It's been a little while. Next up, we have reports. We're going to start off with the City Manager Report, where City Manager Standard is going to give his report and introduce the staff briefing.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I have three brief updates, and then I will turn things over to Laura Hathaway, our city clerk, for a quick staff report. So first of all, just for anyone who's watching at home, and hopefully it's not a surprise to council at this point, but we will be canceling next week's meeting, so there will not be a meeting on January 16th. So thank you for, for patience on that. We'll be back in February. A second update is, as I'm sure you're aware, if you've touched any media or watched the news this week, there's some inclement weather in the area. Maybe you even went outside today. And so we have, it's a long stretch of winter weather that's moving through our region, and there's fluctuating predictions of what might happen. So while the details may change frequently, I just want to make sure everyone knows that the City does monitor these forecasts very closely, and we are prepared to respond. We've had a partial activation of our Emergency Operations Center, which is the means then of how we coordinate the city and make decisions about what needs to be done to ensure safety and service for all. Some important information is posted on our website. While power is still in place, I think we had about 20 or so addresses that were without power when I was looking at 3:00 o'clock. But cold weather shelters and locations in King and Snohomish Counties are available online on the city's webpage, right off the front page. There's also a link to the Streets Department, or Street Team's snow and ice response and priority routes, so you know where the plowing will take place and where to attempt. Again, after surviving my first winter last, last winter and living off of 228th Street, I've been promised that we have the best in the business, and we do. So I'm really thankful for that. And then also links to Puget Sound Energy and the Snohomish County PUD for anyone who's questioning about outage maps and that sort of thing and who to call. I'd like to encourage everyone to think ahead, though, too. And if you are unable to get an update online because power's out or internet's down, it's great to have that number saved somewhere if you are looking to call your power provider and get an update of when power might be coming back on. So that's just the tip of the day. Or keep your cell phone charged fully so you can continue to be on there. So we'll, we'll keep monitoring and responding as we need to. Finally, a little bit of a longer update is that, is about on the pop shops on Main. So council will remember that back on September 12th, we had an update on the pop shops program. For those watching who are not familiar with the program, it was launched back in March of 2021 with four locations on Main Street and Bothell Way Northeast to serve as retail space for entrepreneurs in a two-year program. So that two years is coming up, and we do have some transitions coming up. So the community can expect to see a lot of activity at the pop shops this month as the first class of incubator vendors transition out and the second group starts moving in. The pop shops will be hosting a celebration, the current shops are hosting a celebration of their success and the transition on Saturday from 12:00 to 6:00. You noticed by now that I like to point out when there's food. There will be cookies, I've been promised. So a good opportunity to stop by and really celebrate our three current vendors that are in operations right now. The timeline of what to expect, then, is that starting on Tuesday, January 16th, new vendors will formally take possession of their shops. The February 1st will be the first soft opening for the four new vendors. And then sometimes before Valentine's Day, there will be a ribbon cutting and a formal opportunity for council to welcome them and the community to come out and really welcome them to their new homes for the next two years. We're thankful, I actually see, that our interim Executive Director of the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce, Sandra Lee, is here. Very thankful that the chamber has once again agreed to grant a one-year membership to the new pop shops, so they will be able to fully participate as chamber members and go to general meetings and networking. So really thankful for that contribution to the program. Just to note, too, is that the City also has done a structural inspection and completed, they will be doing minor maintenance to make sure that the shops are up and fresh and ready to go. One of the lessons learned that was shared back in September that I'll just remind council was around, we had had some small business classes that took place already during the two years, and we did see some transition in those two years as people kind of learned and adjusted of, is their business working or not? And I think that's been a really valuable lesson. We've, we've gotten that a couple different ways of people who are operating in the shops and were appreciative of the opportunity. And what they also learned is, in this more like low-risk environment, that their business model worked better a different way. And so they got to test that out before signing an expensive lease, that sort of thing. So that's a success, has some speed bumps, but that was, that's a good part of it. In this case, we ended up moving up a series of classes before then contracts were signed. We're actually in the midst of, I think I have two contracts in my inbox to sign tonight. But the, the people who are operating have already completed a series of four small business classes. So that, that information and knowledge was supercharged with putting that up front. And then we don't want the education to end, so our staff is currently working with One Redmond to provide additional small business workshops throughout this year. So we will be welcoming four new businesses, Bon Chocolats, Citrus Tree Soaps, My Thoughts Pour Out, and Seattle and Saigon in coming in February, and we look forward to seeing that. And I will also just note that, again, we're really thankful for this first group of businesses that were part of the first year. And as I've reminded them, too, is we will continue to be monitoring their success and hope that there's future opportunities. My hope is that six months from now, they'll be telling us how like the pop shops are a distant memory, and they've moved into some bigger and better, better things. But we'll be following up. The program doesn't end just because they've moved out. We'll continue that relationship and see what opportunities there are in the future. So we'll, the, the family just grows. With that, I am going to turn things over to Laura Hathaway, our city clerk. And we have a memo in your package tonight covering board and commission recruitments taking place to fill some vacancies, and Laura's going to talk through that.
Thank you, Mr. Standard. Yep, I'm just going to review what the recruitment schedule is for our board and commissions for this year. We have 16 openings. We actually have 17 because we will have one opening on the Civil Service Commission this year. We will advertise for that at the same time, but that is a city manager appointment, so it won't pertain to this. So we're going to start the openings for all of our boards and commissions with the exception of the Shorelines Board, which remains on hold, starting January 15th, Monday. It will run through February 23rd. And we, and then it'll close. And then we have the interviews for council scheduled for March 19th, with council appointments scheduled for April 2nd, and the new terms will begin on May 1. This schedule will allow for the applicants to take the required open public meetings training, the public records training, and get their city email accounts all established and the security training on that, and be ready to go, we hope, by May 1, and, and meet with their liaisons, et cetera. I can run through the openings that we have, if you like. Like I said, it will be live Monday. We have four on the Arts Commission, three on the Landmark Preservation Board, one on Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as part from the three that we have on the schedule for this evening. We have two on the Parks Board, three on the Planning Commission, and three on the Salary Committee. And that is appointed by the mayor. That one is appointed by the mayor and ratified by the council, so those also will not be part of the interview schedule. And I am happy with that to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. What do we offer applicants who are interested, but maybe, like, when I got into the Planning Commission, I knew people on the Planning Commission, and that's how I was able to ask questions. Do we offer any kind of open house or office hours? Or do we just say, email Laura if you have questions? Like, what's that like?
Well, when we, when they get appointed, we obviously connect them with the staff liaisons, and so we ask them for the actual board and commission questions, specific ones, to contact their council, or their staff liaisons. If I, am I understanding that right? No?
Am it more like before they apply? Like, let's say they see the opening, and they're like, oh, what does that really mean? What are their responsibilities?
We, I mean, yes, they can contact us in the City Clerk's Office. And also, if we can't answer the question, we will connect them with the staff liaison. I will say that we are working with Gabby Kuna, our DEI coordinator, to put some language on there regarding DEI initiatives and just to make sure that we're reaching, doing some outreach to, you know, our community-specific partners. And if Gabby wants to answer that specifically, she could do that for us. But we are going to do some, a little bit more outreach this, this go-around. And that includes language on our application on the webpage. And, and hopefully we can get, get more folks.
I think it's a, it's a great question, though, too. And if there is anything that, in the future, that we could add to the process, that'd be a good conversation to have.
Okay, it's, it might be too soon this time, but I think any, it's hard because if it was in the summer, we could have like a booth at one of the events that we have, but we're not gathering too much in the middle of winter. It would be great to have like an open house where people could learn about it. I think what's cool about these seven is everybody's been on a board or commission, so we can answer questions. And hopefully, I just wonder if people are maybe cautious sometimes because it seems like a silly question, but I would love people to reach out. And maybe somebody's watching, and now they'll reach out, but, yeah.
We have till February 23rd, so we could, we could talk about that and see if there's an opportunity.
Okay. And I'm not just asking for it to happen. I'm happy to be there and answer questions, like, and look like a normal person, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
And I think we did this last year, but I'm going to ask again, just in case. Like, when we get the applicant list, can we have, like, people that are incumbents reapplying for their spot? Like, specifically marked?
Yes, exactly. They will be marked. And I have reached out to all the incumbents already and let them know that their terms are about to expire if they want to reapply.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought of another question, I'm sorry. Do we, like, last time we did this, I felt like there were a lot of really qualified people and not enough positions to, like, appoint them to. Do we let those people know specifically if they've applied before that we're doing this again? And is that an option?
I mean, we could reach out to those people, sure. We haven't done that before. We just have a yearly recruitment. And obviously, if, you know, we might do a mid-year if, if it's a case like LTAC this evening where they're, they're really down a lot of numbers. But we have not reached out to prior applicants.
Okay, I'm done now, I promise. Thank you.
Can I just throw in my two cents that I would really love it if we could make a habit of, like, I think these are ideas from Councilmember Dottor, fantastic, of reaching out to people who had previously applied just to let them know that, like, you know, you did this last time, and if you're still interested, here's another opportunity. I think that kind of engagement and follow-up is really beneficial. And I love the idea of an open house. So if that could be pulled together, that would be great. And if not, like, let's, let's talk about that for next year.
I'd go to an open house. I like that idea. It'd be fun to be able to kind of answer questions from folks in the community that might have them that we don't know. Yeah, I'm into that. All right. I think we're going to move on to council committee reports, community reports, and conversations. Councilmember Zornz?
You know I'm going to have conversation.
Yes.
Especially after our break. I'm just, you know, bursting with things to talk, to talk about. One is to thank our city manager for mentioning folks to reach out to their power companies for updates. And PSC has a great app you can put on your phone. It's called MyPSC. I've used it multiple occasions. We had two squirrels that hit our power line this summer. Evidently, there was a rash all over Bothell. And you just hit that app, and you're in the, you're in the queue line. And it also gives you information about how long you have to wait. So it's, if you don't have MyPSC on your phone, put it on your phone. The other thing is to thank Nick Stroop about being part of the Parade of Lights. I don't think, I mean, we enjoy celebrating, but I don't think we realize how much that does for just encouraging people in the dead of winter. Couple things. I took some senior ladies out to look at lights. And one thing I enjoyed as a parent was listening to my children talk about things in the car. If you haven't driven seniors around in your car and listened to their talk, it was so much fun. And taking them around to look at lights and ooh and ah and reminisce about years past, it was, it was wonderful. So I also wanted to add thanks to the Pogue family, the Widener family, and Pippenich at State Farm, Nancy Pippenich. These are businesses that really just, and, and, I don't know, would you call the Wideners a business? They own that lot that's right behind Shag and the library, and they lit up the trees. They make it look like a park. I think a lot of people think that it's part of our parks. It's not. But they're, but they do a wonderful job supporting the community. So to the Pogue family and the Wideners and Nancy Pippenich, thank you for going the extra mile and making December brighter. And then the last thing that I wanted to do was to, today is National Law Enforcement Day. It's a difficult job. It's not always done perfectly, although I think Bothell sets a very high bar. And I don't think, there's no way we can fully appreciate the risk and sacrifice that goes into police work well done and the professionalism. And I know it's really a demanding job, like, very few jobs are. So I'd just like to recognize and say thank you. And then in May, we get, we get the whole week for National Police Week appreciation. But, and I know the community does tell our officers, "Thank you." But officially today, "Thank you."
I have some news hot off the presses of the KCRHA website. The Urban League was able to find a location to open up a North King County severe weather shelter. And that will be at St. Dunstan's in Shoreline. So St. Dunstan's previously was a location, and now they will be operated by the Urban League, who had talked about opening one up here in Bothell, and that didn't work out. So, but I'm just glad to see our community partners getting together to provide really valuable and important services to people when it's really cold. One thing I would note about this severe weather shelter is that calling ahead to confirm a bed is strongly encouraged. And so there is a phone number on the KCRHA website to call if people are in need of a warm place overnight in the, as we go into this period of cold. So, thank you.
And this is kind of the first time I've taken advantage of this. This is also council conversations, right?
Correct.
City manager recommended I bring this up. At this point, last year, we did not meet during the North Shore School District breaks, midwinter and spring break. And that really helped me out with childcare and all that jazz. So I was hoping to gauge interest on doing that again so that even as folks in the community are taking care of their kids that week, that they're not overtaxed trying to keep up with our very interesting meetings that everybody watches normally. So thoughts, basically, is my question.
I am in support. Yeah, that would be very good for my family, my kids, and travel plans. So thank you.
I will chime in as another person with children in the North Shore School District, that yes, that would be useful for me also. I guess the one thing that I would say is as long as it doesn't throw us into too much chaos chaos, and there's an open meeting we can do next, the following week. When is midwinter break?
February, the week of the 19th. I knew it.
We'll send something out so everybody has the dates, and then I'll do a follow-up to see if there's any implications. And then if we can pull on, if we do a fourth-week meeting, if there's any conflicts with that too. But we'll work with that. Thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you. Appreciate it, everyone.
Last chance. All right, moving on to projected agenda discussion. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Perfect. I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Deputy Mayor Alcabra to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right, moving on to our first agenda bill for the day. It's Agenda Bill 24010, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Appointments. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And as the City Clerk noted earlier, we do have appointments to fill some vacated positions. And as she mentioned, while we normally would do these in cycle, sometimes there's enough vacancies where just being able to have a quorum or have a meeting becomes problematic. And so we like to move forward with that. There was a solicitation earlier this year to see if there's any interest. And we do have three individuals for consideration. I'm going to turn things over to Laura to give a little more context and answer any questions.
Hello. I do not have a PowerPoint again for this, but I do want to say that we, you know, are down several positions on LTAC due to just transitions on and off, people accepting new jobs, et cetera. And so we advertised for these positions mid-October, and we have three openings, and we received three qualified applicants. So because of that, and because of the fact that the LTAC's next meeting is February 20th, and we don't appoint regular board and commissions until starting May 1st, we thought we would ask council to appoint tonight. We tried to get the applicants in so that they could be introduced to you. One of them is here, Sandra Lee, with the Chamber of Commerce. But the other two could not make it. And because LTAC has a meeting coming up February 20th, we thought we would forego the introductions and just ask if council would be willing to appoint these people. You did get their applications in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if they are appointed this evening, they would start immediately so that Dinae could get them up to speed.
And just to clarify for anybody in the community who may be watching, these are restricted spots that need to go to people that are affected by that particular tax, correct?
Correct. They are hoteliers that collect the lodging tax under RCW or Chapter 67.28, or they are recipients involved in the activities that attract tourism to Bothell under Chapter 6728. So they have to be, they're specific.
Perfect.
Yep.
So we're not just doing this and creating fewer opportunities for our community members who want to join towards in commissions?
Correct.
Fantastic. Sounds great.
So if we have no questions, I would like to ask for a motion to appoint the three. But I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
I would be happy to motion to approve the recommended action.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Alderks and a second from Councilmembers Zornz to approve the recommended action, which is to appoint Acting Executive Director of the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, Sandra Lee, to position number four; General Manager of Country Inn and Suites, Omendra Jayasundara, to position number five; and General Manager of McMinniman's, Aaron Lamaro, to position number seven on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. All positions start immediately. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. City Clerk, you go to the roll call from there? How does this work?
I'm going to do it. Councilmember Zornz, please say yes or no when I call your name.
Here, yeah, no, yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Fantastic. Thank you. Next up is Agenda Bill 24011, Council Committee Appointments. Should I call on you to introduce Laura again?
Not necessarily. But I will advocate for Laura, who's going to be keeping track of changes and also counting votes and all that good stuff. Is that, I would say that the one thing I'd add is that this is a continuation, obviously, of the conversation that the council had last week. We're hoping that the attachment in the packet on page 245 of, you know, where you had raised your hand will help see the menu of, ooh, that's what I volunteered for. So there was also, there's four committees that Laura will cover that have more volunteers than not. What we would really love to have today, though, too, is that in terms of how we get a motion or as we're moving forward, is make sure we have complete clarity of who's where. So we may have to pause and confirm that, but that's what we hope to do tonight. And I'll turn it over to Laura to point out any details or to just start answering questions, too. I'm not sure if you have anything to add.
I don't really, thank you. But we could go, if you'd like, we could go through them one by one, or we could just review the four that had more volunteers for the positions than we had the number necessary. I don't, how would you like to do it, Mr. Mayor Thompson?
Maybe you go through them one by one?
Sure.
Would that be easier to just have a conversation and deal with one at a time?
Yeah.
I'm just guessing as to what might be easier, but...
Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to start with the internal committees, which, two of the internal committees are ones that we had more interest than openings. So this is kind of where we need some decisions on that. The first one is the Capital Facilities Plan, and we have three appointments per Resolution 1429, and we have four people interested. So those that expressed interest at the last meeting on January 2nd were Councilmembers Dodd, Councilmember Menke, Mayor Thompson, and Councilmembers Zornz. So I guess I would just like some feedback on, we just need three.
In the past, we've done ballots, I believe, for these, have we? Or did we do a roll call? What did we, how did we vote when it was?
In the past, we've done just by consensus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only other thing we would add is just as a reminder of, for council committees, they are, some of these are externally facing things where we don't have a whole lot of control, other than we have the opportunity to send somebody. For council committees, this is all within the control of the council. And so if you would like to pursue alternatives as opposed to figuring out a lesser, we can do things like with Capital Facilities Plan, for example, that can all come forward in the form of study sessions, or we can amend the composition or how we do it. So if you'd like other options, we can always do that, too. There's nothing that prevents you from taking a pause on these internal committees for a minute.
And if somebody isn't on an internal committee, then they don't have necessarily a vote on that committee, and there's nothing stopping them from attending and participating, is there?
Where we would be monitoring is in terms of that, you know, right now with three representatives, at the point of four, you would, four, because they'd be really acting more, can the council? I would say if the interest was beyond three, it may make sense to bring it here and have it be part of a council meeting.
Okay. In terms of like how we do this, because there's multiple things, should we just like accept nominations and do a roll call for individual people, or? We should ask if anybody wants to, has changed their mind on any of these committees?
If I could, Mayor, on the Capital Facilities Plan, I actually really like the suggestion of bringing that to council as a study session, because I did not raise my hand to be on that committee, but I am actually very curious and interested in the work of that committee. So if it could come to us as a study session, I would welcome that.
The issue with that is that there are a lot of other people on that committee. It's not just a council committee, like the Public Safety Committee or something like that, that is composed of just council. Am I getting this wrong? That would be, that would be hard to have Capital Facilities Plan come here, wouldn't it?
There's a representative from the Planning Commission and then a representative from the Parks Board as well who attend on that. And so we would need to design how to get feedback, either by bringing the content. I would suggest starting at council and then potentially bringing something to each of those boards and commissions for feedback, and then bringing that back to council, or doing a joint meeting, which I know some council members have been interested in as well. So we'd have, we'd probably want to look at details. This also is one that has a resolution that put it into motion, so we'd probably want to come back with an alternate, with a new resolution to express what the current design is. So it'd be one we'd want to, if you wanted to go that route, I'd suggest that we come back with a proposal. We have a little time for that, too. That typically kicks off in the summer.
What do you think?
Having it come back to us, would, like, I'm fine to kind of put that on hold while we, while you figure out a process to make that happen. Are there, I'm wondering if there's, I'm looking, well, I'm looking at my other colleagues who did not volunteer for that role, Ramiel Alcabra and Kirsten Kurd. If you, if council members, you could weigh in what you think. Do you want to leave it up to a committee, or would you like to see those in council meetings?
I'd like to see them in council meetings. I'm really interested in Capital Facilities Plan as well. I understand that it would bring some scheduling challenges, but maybe pursuing something like a joint meeting with other attendees could be helpful. Yeah, especially if we have some time to think about it.
Whatever the team wants.
I mean, I'd say that's a, I mean, we've had, we've had two of the three people that didn't raise their hand for it say that they would like to participate, so I think that's fairly clear. You can, I said two of the three. You were the third.
He was the alternate.
Yeah. You can skip that meeting. It's cool. All right. Let me scroll back up.
Okay, so we're moving on. Okay.
Yeah, we're moving on to the Public Safety Committee.
The Left One Board, the two interested parties were Councilmember Menke and Councilmember Zornz. Everybody good with that? The Human Services Committee, we have three appointments and one alternate, and that's what we have. Councilmember Alderks, Deputy Mayor Alcabra, Councilmember Dodd, and Councilmember Menke as the alternate. The Public Safety Committee, that is another one where we have more people interested than the spots available. So we have, it calls for three appointments plus an alternate, and we have five interested for the four spots. So those interested were Councilmember Alderks, Deputy Mayor Alcabra as the alternate, Councilmember Dodd, Councilmember Menke, and Councilmember Zornz. So that's another one that if council would like, we could have it come to council as a whole in study session format, but...
How often does the Public Safety Committee meet?
We meet quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yeah, we've moved it last year to a quarterly meeting schedule, or as needed. I don't think we ended up scheduling an additional meeting. We were thinking we may need to before the fire service study first came to council, but I think we hit, we hit the timing okay.
I mean, how involved are those normally, I guess I would ask? Is like, is that a couple-hour meeting? Like, are we going to be stacking something on top of a longer council meeting if we?
There are four one-hour meetings a year. Typically, we've tried to divide the time evenly between our police departments and our fire departments. In the last year, I do know that previously, the frequency of those meetings was kind of ad hoc, and that's part of why we, they were, I think, scheduled monthly, and we went to quarterly. We've held to that, although I do think there's been at least one example of where, like, the meeting, it was actually the fire service meeting, where we did just specifically talk about, it was more update around what was coming. And we used that, the benefit was that we used that as a group of, an audience to propose, here's what we're thinking about doing. And it gives a little opportunity for some feedback of how might things happen. I think I'd just reiterate that, again, in that committee, there's no decisions made, but so we've used it as sort of a feedback loop, and if there was any decisions, then it would come to the full council for consideration.
Oh, yeah. Councilmember Zornz?
Is this where we can weigh in on this?
Weigh in.
Okay. So firstborn keeps track of things, because that's what firstborns do. I went through and looked at how many committees and boards each member is on, and I counted whether you were on the committee or an alternate as being assigned on it for the givens. And just going alphabetically, one has seven confirmed. The first one has seven confirmed, would like to be on nine. The next one has eight confirmed, would like to be on 10. The next person has five confirmed. The next person has seven confirmed, would like to be on nine. The next-to-last person has seven confirmed, would like to be on eight. And the last little pumpkin, me at the end of the alphabet, has four confirmed and would like to be on seven. So I would not like to be on fewer committees, but I would be willing to swap. So I would be willing to go to racer if Councilmember Alderks would like to stay on public safety. But I don't want to be on fewer committees. I'm pretty capable at being there and reporting and representing council. So I don't want to be on fewer committees, but I'm willing to swap. I hope that sounds fair.
I can make it a little easier. I cannot be alternate on this one. Now, we have four people, and then somebody has to duke it out to be alternate. So I withdraw my name from that list.
Councilmember Zornz, would you be open to being an alternate on that committee?
I'd have to think about that. I have quite a history of being, tracking what's going on with our public safety, that I think my voice is pretty important on there. Would you be open to being an alternate?
I would like to continue being considered as one of the three appointments.
All right, so if we are at an impasse, and nobody wants to be an alternate, and we have four people, and one person withdrew themselves, how would we go about fixing that?
I mean, it's your appointment, so I...
You could draw straws. And then no one can be mad.
Ben, how about you, Councilmember Menke? I'm sorry. How do you feel about being an alternate?
This was one that I am very passionate about, and out of all of the assignments available, this one and Capital Facilities Plan are my two top committees that I would like to be on. I accepted a couple, because I don't think anybody else wanted them, and I accepted some alternates, because I also didn't think anybody else wanted them. But the top two for me are Capital Facilities and Public Safety.
Okay. I know Councilmember Alderks has been on the committee, and Councilmember Dodd, if she wasn't, did the Community Academy, and I know was really interested in that as well. So we need to figure out a way to vote on these? Can we, can we do ballots?
I'm not prepared with a ballot this evening, but we could do a ballot on this one at the next meeting, if that's, would that work, Kyle?
What do y'all think?
Yeah, we don't, we don't currently have a meeting scheduled, so there's no impact of not making a decision tonight.
Could we each just write three names on a piece of paper? I don't know how formal ballots have to be.
If you want to put your name at the top and then put who you vote for.
Or we could make it even easier. We don't all have a computer. I was going to say, if we all had a computer, we could just email Laura.
I think that, yeah, what Laura is referring to is that per state law, there can be no secret ballots, and so you'd have to, there has to be a name attached to who voted for whom, and then somebody has to read those aloud, so that's the, hence, with the paper, I think that's what you're saying in terms of we would need. It would have to be clear of who voted for whom, so...
Is, are drawing straws state-approved?
We'd have to get back to you. I know coin flips come in in terms of voting for mayor, right? But I don't know where straws lie.
I mean, is there a way we could just fill it out on a piece of paper and write our name on it, and three people? Like, that's all a ballot is going to be, right?
Yeah, I'm going to suggest that maybe we go through the rest of the list, and then we could take a break, and then maybe we could do a quick ballot, and then we'll come back.
Perfect.
If that works.
If that works.
Okay. So we'll come back to this one. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, we had one appointment and plus an alternate. We have that with Councilmember Zornz and Councilmember Menke as the alternate.
Jumping in with a quick question. This one, the time, I looked at my calendar, the time that it occurs as the alternate is iffy for me on whether or not I'd be able to make it. I don't know if anybody has the ability to make it in my place, or if you want to leave me as the alternate, that's fine, but I wanted to put it out there in case anybody else wanted to take this one as an alternate.
Jean doesn't miss LTAC meetings.
I don't miss LTAC meetings. Very rarely do I. And we're quarterly, so if anyone's brave enough to take the alternate, I think you'd be playing, you'd be playing your cards pretty well.
I'm happy to share alternate. Maybe Jean could reach out to both of us, and one of us will have a calendar break that will work.
That'd be great.
Yeah. But I'm assuming she'll just go to all of them, too, so...
Snohomish collaboration, I like it.
That is it for the internal committees. The next one we have, and I don't have anything on this, I don't know how I missed that one. We have the Joint City and Fire Advisory Board.
City Clerk, this is the one that is usually made up, or has been made up of members of the Public Safety Committee, so that's probably why we don't have anyone.
Oh, that's right. Okay, thank you. Okay. Association of Snohomish County and City, County Cities and Towns, we just have one informal appointment. And so I suppose we can have an alternate, so we have Councilmember Dodd and Councilmember Menke signed up to be the alternate on that. Good. The North King County Coalition on Homelessness, that asked for one appointment, one alternate, and that is Councilmember Alderks as the appointee, with Deputy Mayor Alcabra as the The Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee, that also asked for one appointment plus an alternate. Right now, I have Council... The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, one appointment, one alternate. I have Deputy Mayor Alcabra for that with the alternate as Councilmember Curd.
Due to some scheduling issues, I will be the primary. I put my name for the primary appointment, and Deputy Mayor.
Oh, okay.
Informed me that he could be an alternate.
Great. Thank you. Wyra Eight is one appointment, one alternate.
Sorry, Laura. Just confirm confirmation. This can be there is a virtual option for this meeting, right?
For the Sound Cities Association, correct.
Thank you.
For Wyra Eight, we've got one appointment plus an alternate. And so what I have from last week is Councilmember Curd for that one as the appointee with the alternate as Councilmember Zorn. The Regional Crisis Response Agency, also known as Racer, that is one appointment plus an alternate. I have Councilmember Alderks with alternate as Councilmember Dodd. The Metropolitan Solid Waste Advisory Committee, I have it's just one appointment, and I have that listed as Councilmember Alderks.
I'm so excited.
The King County Cities Climate Collaboration, also known as K4C, that is one appointment plus an alternate. I have Councilmember Curd with an alternate as Councilmember Dodd.
If anyone would like to be Councilmember Curd's alternate, please feel free to speak up. Looking at my calendar, it's it's a bit dicey. So I won't be offended and will perhaps be relieved if you're interested in being the alternate. All right. Sounds good, then.
If you can't make it, like, use another one of us as an alternate. Like, don't feel like you have to go.
The next one is the North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area Board, also known as the NPRSA. That is two appointments plus an alternate. I have Councilmembers Manke, Council and Zorn's with an alternative Councilmember Dodd. Good. The next one is the Eastside Transportation Partnership. That is two appointments plus two alternates. So I have Councilmembers Alderks and Mayor Thompson as the appointment pointies with Councilmember Curd and Councilmember Manke listed as the alternates. The next one is the UWBCascadia Campus Town Community Advisory Board, which calls for one appointment plus an alternate. And I show I have that's another one that we have a couple more than one more than we need. So it's asking for one appointment plus an alternate. Right now, the interested parties are Councilmember Alderks, Councilmember Zorn as the appointee, and Deputy Mayor Alcabra as the alternate.
I'll make it easier. I'll drop.
So you'll drop, and that means I need.
I am interested in in moving on to this advisory board because one of the one of the things that I wanted to bring to the city when I joined council was improve partnerships between the campuses and the city. And so I'm really looking forward to to working with staff at both colleges in that capacity. And so I'm I'm excited about this about this board and would like to like to have the opportunity.
As I said before, I have a long history with this board, even before it became a board for city council members to be on. And it is not just the campus and city. We have a staff member who's there, and they evidence quite a good collaborative relationship with the campus. It is also representative of the people who live around the campus. And that's not just Sunrise Valley View. It's Brackets Landing. It is the base of Maywood Hill. It's it's pretty comprehensive when you talk about people who are invested in what's going on. It's it's there's a lot of balls that are being juggled here in the conversation. It is a good I would encourage everyone to be at it. But I'm very familiar with the history and how we got there. And as long as I'm living and part of this community, I want to be a part of this board.
Is that another one where we should do a ballot?
I mean, there's only two. Could we do a roll call vote? Or should we do a ballot?
I think we'd probably be best if we had a ballot.
Let's do a ballot.
Yeah. I don't. Okay. Are there any is there anyone else interested in serving on the UWCC campus before I move on? Thank you. Next up, we have the Washington Wash Dot Executive Advisory Group, which is one appointment. And we have Mayor Thompson for that one. Okay. Then we have the Community Transit Board. And this one is where they did the board selection for you to go on the 18th. So that's Mayor Thompson. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Then the other one, this is another one where we have we have one appointment for the North Urban Human Services Alliance. So they're requesting one appointment. We show three interested, Councilmember Alderks and Councilmember Dodd as the appointee, and Councilmember Curd as the alternate. So we're asking for one appointment on this one.
Isn't this the one where Councilmember Alderks is in a community position, and we're opening up a position? So she is not interested in serving and representing the city on this board, correct?
Yeah, the I think the purpose here is that while I've been in this role, Councilmember Dodd expressed interest in in taking and being the appointed role for the city. And so I would withdraw. And then that would be Councilmember Dodd's assignment with Councilmember Curd as the alternate. It's well, we have an alternate listed. I know.
We're gonna call it an alternate, and it'll be okay.
Yeah, I don't know that they asked for an alternate, but I don't I don't personally have a problem with if we have an alternate, so.
And I know how to bug people if he's not available, so it all works out.
Okay.
Can confirm.
So we have Councilmember Dodd with Councilmember Curd as the alternate. Great, thank you. And the rest are mayor's meetings. So those are Mayor Thompson and with Deputy Mayor Alcabra as the alternate. So.
Perfect.
With that, what if we move on to the fire study? And and then we can after the fire study, we can come back, do the ballots for the positions that we need to. And then I would ask for a vote to ratify all the appointments after that.
Perfect.
Does that does that work?
Can I propose instead a 15 minute break for the council?
Yes.
While the clerk does that and before the study session?
It is.
Just for clarity, the break we'll have a break, we'll have a study session, and then the clerk will come with ballots. Is that correct?
Correct. That is my understanding. We all good with that? Nobody's saying no, so I'm going to assume yes. It is 6:59. We'll come back at 7:15. We'll round out. All right. We are at time. It's time to come back. I don't have my script in front of me, but the next thing that we're going to do is turn it over to the city manager to introduce the presenters for the study on fire.
Perfect. And we share our microphones, so this all this all works out well. Councilmembers, we are back from December 12th is we had a study session where council was able to review, to quote the deputy city manager, every legal option in the state of Washington that could be considered and looking at narrowing things down. I think we took one thing off the list. So it did meet the definition of narrowing. We're back tonight, though, to try and get some more concrete direction. And so I will note that within the agenda bill, staff has presented a recommendation. We don't often have recommendations in the study sessions, but we thought it would be helpful for you to have something to react to as opposed to a longer list of choices. So there's a staff staff recommendation that'll be covered tonight. And I'll just say that we will want to make sure that we don't leave the table until we like have pretty good clarity about what to do next, if at all possible. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to the deputy city manager, Tony Call, for further introductions and framing.
Thank you, City Manager Standard. You're my mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. As always, it's a pleasure to come back and be with you tonight to talk about the fire service study. I'm going to hit these slides pretty quickly because they are repeat slides. So as you know, the fire department is to safeguard the lives, property, and environment of our community through exceptional service and education, preparedness, prevention, and response to emergency incidents. That is the body of work we're talking about when we talk about a fire service study. Last time we were here in December, the chief did go through quite an overview of the different components of the fire department. And if that needs to recome back later, you certainly can we can do that during Q and A if you have additional questions there. Tonight, as City Manager Standard noted, we are here looking for some direction from you this evening. We are seeking direction from council to pursue a near term partner to provide fire administrative services. We're not asking for formal action this evening. Formal action would have to require at a normal, regular session. So tonight, we are looking for the ability to bring back formal action in the future. Our agenda this evening is that I believe this is the third serving we've had on the fire service study. So I'll do a quick recap of those three times that we've been here before through a timeline chart. We have the key findings. Those are the same key findings that we had on December 12th. I'll bring those back to you, and then I'll turn it over to Mark for our staff recommendation to you. So heading through where we've been on the fire service study back in June of 2023, we came before you and asked for direction to go forth and do a review of the fire service models available under RCW. At that time, council did direct us to pursue that work and come back with answers. You also at the time said, we'd like you to think about a set of guideposts regarding principles attached to that. There were five areas of that. First was any recommended option would need to maintain or improve level of service. We would need to continue to continue to respect all of our employees through this process. Any recommended option would need to be economically sensible. And I'm going to repeat what we've said several times in the past. That does not mean cheapest, nor does that mean lowest cost. Economically sensible is really about the right value for the service in the community and the value in the community. There was a couple of how to do our work included in that. One was to ensure we did stakeholder and employee outreach, and that we also led a very transparent process. And I think we've been able to do all of those things at this time. Over the course of the summer and fall, staff did tremendous work. I think I have probably six or 10 inches of paper in my office attached to the work here. We analyzed all six options. We talked about advantages and disadvantages of those options at a fairly high level. We actually went out and looked at all municipalities in King and Snohomish County and what was their fire service model. Then we also interviewed several entities, some that were successful and one that wasn't successful as they approached a fire service model decision. And we also did employee outreach at several times during the course of the summer and the fall. We came back to you on December 12th, just last month, and we reviewed that very dense body of work with you. We brought you a fairly high summary, and we spent quite a bit of time thinking about the advantages and disadvantages of each of the options. There were six options that we came in with, and council did direct us to remove what I am calling option number five, which was to no longer investigate, at least at this time, the ability to annex into an existing RFA. And that was mainly because there was not really a King County facing RFA. And one of the concerns was ensuring that we kept NORCOM and our King County Medical One service attached to that. So we removed that from our from our time, at least now. I wouldn't say forever, but, you know, at this time, we've removed that body of work from this from this work. You also asked for a variety of additional information, most of which you will find in your packet this evening, including a matrix. I believe you can find that on page 258 of your packet. That looks at all the options across the top and a series of those guiding principles down the side on the left hand side. It talks about level of service, employees, et cetera. Another piece that came up was what were the different roles of governance. We've also included that on that very same matrix on page 258. We asked for a map that's included in your packet. And there were some other questions that also arose, mainly regarding NORCOM, King County Medical One. I think we've addressed those as well in the packet. Tonight, we're back, and we have all of that information available to you. I will not plan on going through the matrix in detail unless council would like me to. And then, of course, we can do that. And then from there, we have a near term recommendation for you as we approach next steps. And then anything that comes out of tonight, of course, will be returning to council. I'm not exactly sure when. But as we conclude this conversation, I think we'll be able to assess when that timeframe would be. These key findings are the same key findings you saw on December 12th with the word exception of the word has the word remaining has been added in the first two bullet points. So all remaining options, since we did remove one option, all remaining options are possible, and they do provide outstanding customer service to our community. The other thing we learned, and you can see this in the matrix as well, is that the larger the agency, the more potential efficiencies or economies of scale, the ability to use what I am going to term fire service assets, whether it be a ladder truck or an aid car or a regular engine. The more you have, the easier it is to move those things around your community. So those types of things become what I would call efficiencies. We also learned that regional fire authorities, RFAs, fire districts, annexations are very long and complicated processes. They have considerations both of the city and the new entity, and they are all, again, very good options. They're just a longer process. The last thing I think we took away, and Mark will talk a little bit more about this on the next slide, is that we learned that starting small or partnering with others to allow for first steps, that does not negate our other future options. So that being able to partner, that does not take other options off the table for further council consideration, is a positive first step to go because it puts us forward in a path and yet also provides complete options in the future. So as we move forward, I think that's probably the biggest piece. Mark, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you. Based on the findings that the deputy city manager just reviewed, our near term recommendation is to pursue a RFP for executive level services. As was pointed out, this preserves all of our remaining options and allows us to start the process of assessing potential partners that are potentially out there to work with. I want to take a moment and summarize my thoughts on this nine month process that my partner, Crime, and I have been involved in. And as your fire chief, I would simply add that all the research we've done, all the conversations we've had, the legal advice we've sought, have all led me to firmly believe, based on my 40 years in this experience in this fire service, that this option is our best path forward. This option allows us to have some meaningful conversations with potential partners about benefits that both agencies could enjoy and what a shared future may look like. There will be benefits to the partner agency as well. I look back on my experience when I was a deputy chief in Bellevue. They loaned me to Woodinville Fire Department as an interim chief. I came for a six month assignment. I came back to Bellevue as a much stronger deputy chief, and it positioned me well when I got promoted to fire chief in Bellevue. I was far more experienced than I would have been if I had just stayed in Bellevue. So there are benefits to both agencies involved here. The measured approach we are proposing opens the door for a potential larger combined agencies and the efficiencies that that will bring. While initially, the agencies will operate largely While initially, the agencies will operate largely as they do today, separate agencies, as time goes by under this model, opportunities are going to be found within that model to meet the needs of both agencies. Things such as combined efforts with data management, personnel scheduling, joint purchasing, software needs, all kinds of things like that are going to come to the surface that we can cooperate on during this initial phase. All of those are a win for Bothell. However, the, this proposal will also address near-term executive leadership needs within the Fire Department. This will be accomplished while also allowing time for the more long-term discussions to occur among partner agencies about a more robust model to better serve Bothell as the city continues to grow and evolve. The city will then have time to determine whether that outcome is establishing an RFA, a more inclusive partnership agreement, expanding on the one we might end up in, or any other one of the other options which we have discussed. Those would all still be open to us. Lastly, I briefed both President Moog of the IAFF Local and Fire District Ten Chair, Mike Norris, yesterday on what we are going to advocate tonight. And while I hesitate to speak formally for either of them, I think I can say that they positively, or they viewed this positively and were very interested in looking at it and what it would, what this model could bring to it. So in closing, I will just say, I feel, as your fire chief, I feel this approach provides our highest chance for long-term success, and I can say I support it without any reservation And obviously, we're asking council's endorsement of this move, and we're more than happy to ask, answer any questions that council may have.
First, thank you for everything that came to make this happen tonight. So thank you for that. I think I'm going to table my questions, simply because I don't think it would be a good use of our time, because a lot of those are just, is information that we can't have and that we could only guess at, that we would not be able to answer very accurately until we've gone through the process of going, moving the administration out to have someone else do. And while you were talking, I thought, oh, what if, if we, if we put a request out there and nobody bites, that would tell us a lot right there. So, or if a whole bunch of, whole bunch, if several agencies were to step forward, that would also tell us something. So, and, and also looking at the options, most of them involve voter support. We're not in a position to put something forward to voters to speak intelligently to any of these particular options. We need more information, and it's, your recommendation says that's going to get us, get us more information. So I support staff recommendation on this.
I have a quick question. You know, obviously, if we go out for administrative support, that's kind of a first step toward a second step. And if we're going to be comparing different organizations and assuming that a couple different people decide, hey, we'd like to work with the Bothell Fire Department, like, I don't know that I would want to make the decision about step one without knowing what step two looked like with those different organizations. Like, is there a way that we can kind of compare and contrast what the, I mean, service cost, kind of all the different things that they'll come back with for kind of that step two, if we went all the way?
Yeah, I think part of the process is meeting with those entities and having those conversations. And I think that would go into the selection process of where, you know, if they have no interest in something that we would have a high interest in, to me, that would eliminate them from contention. So I think there's just a process that the city manager needs to define to help us through this.
But are we going to get cost estimates from the different organizations for kind of that step two as well?
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
Sure. So I think step one is really a standalone, as a standalone agreement, right?
Yeah.
And I think with any who have an agreement, there are obviously termination clauses and a variety of ways that allow partnership, because at this point, we're talking about a very isolated part of our leadership that we would be talking about. I think heading to step two, I think would probably require an additional RFP is my gut.
Okay.
I don't think, I think there'd be a path to being able to have an additional conversation around that. It's always feasible that the future turns out different, and I completely acknowledge that because I don't have a crystal ball. But I think step one is a standalone contract that allows us to figure out what that next step looks like.
Perfect. All I want is that like we're making the long-term decision with all of the long-term information that we need to make that decision. And if that's going to be two separate decisions, then we will have that, and that makes me happy.
Okay. Yes, I would guarantee whatever that next step is would have to have costs and a whole lot of things attached to it.
I'm wondering about timeline. So this is billed as sort of a short-range phase one. Is there a bookend on when we need to start transitioning into the next phase? And does that get written into the RFP?
I think timeline is something that's negotiated. So I could see a several-year process. I, I can't give you a complete answer on what the timeline would be, but it certainly is a negotiated part of the contract, because I think both partners have to agree to what that looks like. I would think that we would have, like any contracts at the city, there is an end date attached to those under which we would have to make, and then exit decisions.
So that end date is like on the several-year order?
I don't know the answer to that question. I think that really is, I think that really is a negotiated option because the partnership matters, and anything outside of that, you'd want to make sure that you both have the same concept of what that looks like.
Yeah, fair. Thanks.
I think kind of on that, a similar note, I guess I'm curious, let's say we do proceed, and then it, for whatever reason, doesn't go well. What do the, what does the exit look like? Do we have options to say, okay, like, are there benchmarks built into the contract that if they're not met, we say, okay, this is not working for us? I guess I'm just curious about the ability to pull back.
I think the answer is, when we're talking about an administrative, or I think it was termed an executive services contract, we've transferred no assets. We've transferred no employees. We are in a place where if things are not operating as needed, that the contract obviously would have some sort of, and I, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I'm assuming any contract we would have here at the city would have a series of termination clauses, reasons why things would need to get pulled out like any other contract we'd have here at the city.
That makes sense. I'm still baking the next question, so I'll, I'll stop.
I have a couple, couple plus one questions. Has this been done before in our area?
Yes, we discussed this entire concept with the city of Linwood. That's how they entered into their agreement. We just saw Mercer Island go through this. They went from a management contract to a full-service contract over the course of a few years. So yes, it's been done before, and in my own experience, I came up and did it for Woodinville for six months and then exited out.
Oh, so that's how it's going to work? So you, we go, we get a contract with, say, Eastside Fire, as an example.
Yeah.
They will say, oh, we have a deputy chief, or whoever.
Yeah.
That we will contract out to you, to Bothell for a certain period of time? Is that how it works?
Yeah, I would couch it that whatever agency we would do this with, their fire chief would become me, the Bothell Fire Chief. And I envision it could work out differently, that then we would ask a, that that agency assign a full-time person, a deputy chief or assistant chief at City Hall upstairs here, to run the day-to-day operations of the Fire Department. But the chief of that agency would ultimately be our fire chief.
And we would pay the salary or contribute to the salary of however number of employees are assigned?
Yeah, what I would envision, and again, it's the contract, is that we would pay, for example, since that person, the deputy chief or assistant chief, is full-time here, we would pay their salary 100%. However, we'd maybe pay a proportional cost to the fire chief because they're overseeing two agencies.
Right.
And we're only maybe two-thirds of that, so maybe two, you know, and then maybe a management fee or something along with that. But it, how, I hesitate to even go there right now because all of that's up to negotiation.
I'm, I understand. I'm just trying to conceptualize this, this thing, this, this proposal. So what happens if we do not do this? If today we say, no, we, it's an all or nothing type thing?
If the path is not to move forward with here, with this option that staff has recommended, council can pick another one of the five options that are in the grid, and we can always remain as Bothell Fire as we are and hire a fire chief. But there's four other options or five other options on the grid that is completely open for council's discussion and direction to us. We felt this option, as the chief mentioned earlier, was the least risk option for us to be able to say, we can test the waters and yet still find out and leave other, all the other options open. That's why this one ended up on the table.
And, and just for a transparency thing, I had the conversation with city manager, is the, the urgency for this, is there an urgency for this, number one? And if there is, what is it?
Just to go to the study session, does that have to make a decision? No, I think if, if there's an urgency for this, one of the things that we're reflecting on is that, you know, I know as I was coming in onboarding, I was aware, I think in February of, before, before my application was even turned in as a candidate, you had a study or the Bothell City Council had a study session to talk about an option. And there's been, I think we initially said about a decade, there've been conversations about what, what the direction for Bothell Fire would be, and then I think we've had some fire personnel remind us that it's much longer than 10 years. And so I don't know that it's an urgency, but I would say that there's been a question hanging over the operations for a while now of what does the future of Bothell Fire look like? And so we did see this as a window of opportune time with the retirement of Chief Crone, and then bringing in an interim chief seemed like a good opportunity, window of opportunity to say, if we want to pursue something different, let's do it now before we have somebody pack up their family and move to Bothell and become our fire chief and then say, now we want to look. So, so it's not a, it's not like a shot clock urgency of if we tick down too far, but I think it's really is the, let's figure out what the, what the approach is going to be, and let's pursue that. Let's figure out how we want to invest in the Bothell Fire Department and for the Bothell Community, and this was the window of opportunity to do it.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. This is, this is helpful. And I know it's going to be a speculation thing, and you might, the answer might be, might be no. Sorry, keep doing this. The, the question I have is, what would be, what would it look like? Because I was looking at, because the question of what is step two, what that would look like? So we sign up with an agency. We have a contract with an agency. How would, which one of those, because this map triggered the question also. The question is what's step two, and then the map of all the agencies, which is really helpful, is how, how is it going to work with, between King and Snohomish County? You know, what would change as far as servicing?
I don't think anything would change. I, you know, sitting here at this moment, I would not recommend we partner with a Snohomish County agency. We just got the police department onto NORCOM, and then to have us switch to whatever Snohomish County agencies wouldn't make any sense. We are a King County-facing Fire Department. Our procedures, our paramedics are all built around King County. And so I, those agencies are wonderful agencies. It's nothing against them. It's just, we need to be in a King County agency is my recommendation.
And looking at the map, it seems like the options are limited if you want to have operational efficiencies and these things, right?
Yes, I would agree.
All right. Thank you. I'm good.
I'm going to sneak back in. I don't know if this question is premature, but you had mentioned, you know, obviously, you're here as an interim chief, and then a deputy chief would be assigned. We have some deputy chiefs. Would they stay as well? Like, I know one of them is, has put off retirement, but would we lose people from our team doing this?
I don't believe so. I think we would ask the agency to assign a chief officer, senior chief officer here. That's subject to negotiation, obviously, but we still have a need for that internal knowledge and would, you know, to help guide the department in those day-to-day things. So I don't anticipate losing any personnel through this.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of my questions have been answered, asked and answered by my colleagues, and the answers that you've given them. But I think my next question is, you know, if we were to pursue this recommendation, how does this help us be better prepared for like the completion of this process, where we're able to then move on to like the phase two of figuring out the other options?
I would, I would put it as you've entered into a relationship with an agency, and you're allowed to test drive each other for a while to see how that relationship works. And then as that develops, you can start having talks at a higher level about where do we ultimately want to end up? Where does Bothell City Council want to end up? Where, where does that agency's leadership want to end up? And, you know, that's a conversation for a couple year or two from now, maybe. But I think it's, that's how it starts. That's how many of the agencies that we talked to, they started with this type of agreement and then slowly crept into some of the other options that are available to you.
I think I like the metaphor of, of test driving. The idea that different agencies could get to know each other and, and figure out, is this, is this going well? Do we want to expand on this? Would there, but then I also want to like look at it from the other side of that, is what if the RFP that we enter into for these services doesn't work out? Do you then open up to RFPs again to test drive another agency?
I think we'd have to do an assessment of the why before you would jump into doing the same thing twice. I think you would, I think we would take the time to think about what brought us to this place that it wasn't working, and then make a choice around what would happen next. I, I think whenever we think about, when we start and stop something, if we find that something's not working, the first thing we should do is reassess the why. And once you do that, I think the answer might come. So I don't think that's an answer to your exact question, but I think that is the reality of probably what would happen.
And then I guess my, like, sort of a lingering question, and maybe this is just asking you to reiterate what you've already said, but I'd like to better understand, like, what got us to the point in the city of Bothell where, where the Fire Department would benefit from? I don't know if this is additional administrative services or a change in administrative services.
I would call it in a change of methodology of how you provide administrative purposes to the Fire Department. Instead of having an internal chief, you're going to have an external chief and some administrative assistants running the place. We've, I think we've reviewed quite a bit of why there is a benefit to a larger agencies and some of the efficiencies that can, that can be gained, along with better opportunities for employees throughout it. And then other things- And then other things like long-range stuff like fire station location, how does all of that factor in, in the long run? And as council members, Warren discussed last week, do you want to go that on your own or should we do that as more of a strategic methodology? So I think there's many benefits to a larger organization that would help us.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Go ahead.
You just, you just made me think of something as far as fire station locations. In the Public Safety Committee, when we reviewed sort of like spots where we're not responding as much, other agencies are, there was down south and then also, I'm just going to point at you, over by Ben's house. So in the east of Canyon Park. And I wonder if we do contract with a King County agency, how likely, I mean, why would they build a station in Snohomish County? Like, I guess, I wonder if that would be more of a battle at that point and if there's anything we can compare that to.
So I'm going to get Mark to talk about something that I'm not very articulate at, but he's brilliant at it, which is to chat about how mutual aid works and automatic aid and how the fire service is not just a bit of an island, right? So currently, down the south end of the city, I believe there's other stations down there in a neighboring city that are probably helping serve that. Can you talk about automatic aid and mutual aid, sir?
Yeah, the system is really phenomenal. And I remember when we talked about those maps, when we were talking about putting the aid car in, we cautioned you that just because the map wasn't the right color, that doesn't mean that that area wasn't being served. And what happens is somebody calls 911, reports a type of emergency, and in all of our vehicles, there is what we call AVL, which is Automatic Vehicle Locators. So say they call in a dumpster fire or a car fire or something, our response plan calls for one engine company to respond to that. So the computer instantly searches for the closest resource to meet that need. It might be a Kirkland Engine Company. It might be a Snohomish County Engine Company or a Bothell one, but the closest one is going to be dispatched to that regardless of boundary. So, and the same thing if it was, say, a structural fire and they want four engines and two ladder trucks and two chiefs, they're just going to find the four closest and send them regardless of boundary. So I'm not too worried about that. I think station locations and things like that is something you want to be very strategic about and they take a lot of study. And I think doing it from a position of just Bothell is a weaker position than doing it from a more collaborative position.
Totally. And I want to be clear, I don't think that Ben's not going to get a response at his house. I think my concern is, we had talked about, if we ever did build another station, it would make sense to put it where we don't have our coverage, where we're not covering as much of the calls in that area. So that was kind of the question. But I also, it doesn't, it's not like, you know, calls stop at a city line or a boundary line. So you would want to act in concert, so, yeah.
This is way down, way down the road and it's just, my father used to get after me about thinking about what-ifs, deal with what is. I'm going to do a what-if and it would really chafe with him right now. But looking at the map that's on, I think, page 262 on our agenda packet, I eyeballed this with that same concern about what about the northeast corner of Bothell? And I thought, well, maybe at some point Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue would want to give a piece of their territory up. If we, if, if, if we were to form, say, a regional group with Kirkland Fire, maybe Snohomish would say, it'd be more efficient if we gave you a piece of. I don't know if that would happen, but I, and that's way down the road. But I could see some of these fire district lines changing five, 10 years down the road.
Unfortunately, I left my crystal ball upstairs, but no, I don't even, I don't even want to go get it. Yeah, I couldn't even predict how that could potentially work out.
One thing I noticed in looking at this map is that there is one King County-facing department that has experience administering fire services in Snohomish County, and that is Shoreline because Woodway is above the county line and Shoreline is already providing services to Woodway. And so, like, I could see that with that experience, that might be an advantage to us and to them because they've kind of already worked out some of those inter-county issues. But yeah, I don't know if Shoreline would ever consider expanding, like, if they expanded into Bothell, would they expand more into Snohomish as well? And those are all other crystal ball questions.
The, the reality is, is if Shoreline elected to become a partner with us or we elected to become a partner with them, they would, in the essence, that we already contract with Snohomish County Fire District 10. So they would assume that coverage.
I would love to learn more about any, if they have any lessons learned about the little, about, I think it's just Woodway, maybe, from the map?
Yes.
And how that's going? Like, does NORCOM dispatch or do they have both or how does that work? So.
I can.
It doesn't have to be like a whole study session, just an email is fine, too.
Councilmember Dodd, NORCOM already dispatches for us in Snohomish County right now, so there wouldn't be a change there.
No, I'm not saying there'd be a change. I'm just curious how it's working for them.
Okay.
Sounds like all this is like step two, when we need to answer step one first.
That's exactly what I was going to jump.
Oh, that's why I'm a good deputy. Are you looking for a vote for us, from us, or like, or head nods or how is it going?
I would at least ask for some verbal consensus that allows us to be clear as we leave the table tonight, what, what your direction is to us.
I agree with the staff recommendation and I would like to learn more about contracting for administrative services.
I like it. I want to hear more, especially the nitty-gritty on what it all covers. Like, executive services is specific but also broad, so I would like to know more about that.
I support the staff recommendation as well, especially with, you know, the next step is then to collect the RFPs and to see what different agencies are proposing. And I think that's going to be really important for us to be able to like look at in detail and understand, you know, what are the pros and cons of that process? So, yeah, I would encourage you to move forward. Question is, if, not to, I'm not trying to insult any agency, but what if we looked at all of the RFPs and we said, actually, we'll just keep going the way we're going? Is that still an option?
That is always still an option.
Okay.
Thank you, council. We appreciate your time this evening. I think, I think we've got staff direction.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right. Oh, that's right. We are, so we're going to head back there. We can stay here? All right. And we need to do committee assignments and I believe we have some ballots from the clerk? Perfect. Oh, they're at the dais.
They'll be at the dais in a moment.
Everybody just stuck around for fire. I, all right, for this next one, I had a conversation with the city manager in the hall and I am going to turn it over to him to kind of summarize that conversation.
Thank you, mayor. And so, council, I think we did come up with clarity for all but two of the assignments. One of them, an internal committee, which was the Public Safety Committee, of which there are still four interested parties. And the other one, which is the University of Washington Bothell and Cascadia Community or Caspadia College Campus Town and Community Advisory Board. What I spoke to the mayor about is there's, there is an option of moving forward with approving the slate minus those two groups tonight. And the reason I say that is, is that there's, some of these, like the community transit one, they're meeting on the 18th. We need to make a decision. These two groups, one, we control the calendaring completely in the Public Safety Committee and there's no meeting scheduled until we have a committee. And the, the other one, which is the, the campus-related one, what I would want to propose, because honestly, I've, I've been confused myself and some of that I've chalked up to being new, but I think that it might be beyond that. There's been, in the past, a town committee, or a community advisory board, and there's also a community advisory committee. And they're two different groups. And the committee, the committee group actually did meet this September and it does involve members of the community and various stakeholders. The board did not meet in the year 2023 unless it was really early in the year. Time is fluid, but there was a meeting. And after that meeting, I had actually asked a question of the chancellor and the president about the purpose of that meeting and it's kind of been put on hiatus. I spoke with, with Ryan McGurven, who is the UW-Bothell Director of Government and Community Relations today, actually. And while he acknowledged that at some point we'd like to get that group back together, we really need to reform what the purpose was. It, it has had purpose in the past. It will continue to have purpose, but I think there's some reframing of it. So there's no immediate need to have a representative for that. And it may help council make a decision more if we had a defined purpose of what the intent of that group would be and then could come back and have somebody appointed. So that one could be a pause. The Public Safety Committee, I would just note again, is council committees, a lot of times the driver of why you would have a committee is to free up time on council agendas. So you have something start with a smaller group of people and then bring it to the, to the entire council. If that is not a problem that we're looking to solve, again, I had said in the first quarter, number one, you're hearing about the fire department quite a bit. We can also, I know we have some police updates that are intended to come to the full council to talk about what we're learning so far about the, the school speeding camera program. Also, potentially have some conversations to start talking about policy and direction, thinking about if there's any additional programs we might want to consider for Bothell and as we head into the next budget period. So again, I think there are things that we could just bring to council in the study session format if that was of interest. So I just wanted to put those out as alternatives, as those two, as an alternative to voting tonight, is that we could kind of put a pause on those, get a little bit more information and clarity on the external one. And on the internal, we could try it of bringing it to the council and then see if you'd like to form a committee as an alternative. So I'll just share that with you. I think that'd be something for council direction, if you'd like to entertain the idea of removing those two from the vote tonight and moving forward the rest of the slate and then we could do something else. I do want to clarify, too, that on the Capitol Facilities Plan Committee, that we have committed to, we'll bring that back. That isn't going to be voted on tonight, so just to not mix in a third option, that one, we will, we will look at that and what an alternative model would look like. It is of our three committees. It's the only one that has a resolution that really defines what it is intended to be. So that's another reason around the Public Safety Committee, for example, is it might be helpful to have a conversation further if we were going to have a committee of what you would like to go to that committee, the frequency. We've, we've kind of been, we've been working with it and we've been working with the committee over the last two years to make it work, but maybe getting some more feedback and then having a resolution would also help add clarity to the purpose, which I think, again, as you consider appointments, might be a valuable tool. Happy to answer any other questions, but wanted to throw that out as an option if that's something council wants to consider.
Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. As, as one of the council members expressed, you know, an addition, a possible additional council member expressing interest, I actually very much would prefer what you're proposing because it means that council would be getting updates from police and fire, kind of like we're talking about with the Capitol Facilities. And then also, it sounds like there is some clarification needed for the outward-facing one. And that makes sense to, to get some more information and define that, that board a little more clearly before we move forward. So I'm, I'm on board with that. Thank you for, for bringing that to us.
I think what I appreciated about it was it saves us votes for the sake of votes so we could have meetings for the sake of meetings. Does anybody have a different opinion?
No, since I turned it on.
Okay. I think, I think we got direction.
So then we would want to pick back up on the resolution that's before you. And I think in the motion, we can help with that motion. I think the motion would be that, let me take a look at it. Laura, if you want to help it, but I'll pull it up and see what I can do. I think the recommended action was to review and amend the committee assignments where more council members have expressed an interest in serving than the number of positions offered. I think we'd want to be looking at a motion to approve the city council committee assignments with the removal of the Capitol Facilities Plan Committee, the Public Safety Committee, the UW-Bothell, Cascadia College Campus Town Community Advisory Board. And then also reflecting changes. Laura, if you have something ready you want to do, or I can do that really quickly.
Just say, and approve as amended with the removal of those. Okay.
And just for clarity, yeah, I think there was a few there of where.
They changed a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
But I would say approve as amended with the removal of CFP,
Okay.
PS, Public Safety Committee, and the UW-CC Campus Advisory Board.
I think I might be able to make a motion that could do the trick if it's a time to try. Okay. I move that we approve the council committee assignments as amended with the removal of the Capitol Facilities Plan, the Public Safety Committee, and the UW-Bothell-Cascadia College Town Community Advisory Board.
Second. I have a motion from councilmember Dodd and a second from councilmember Manke, as stated. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name, councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, city clerk. All right, we, our next agenda bill is a closed session. It is labor negotiations pursuant to RCW 423140A. How much time do we expect this to take? 30?
I believe it's, I believe it's 30 minutes, yes.
All right. All right, we, it is 8:06. We will return at 8:35. And we are not expecting action, correct? Or can we adjourn from there since we're not expecting action?
Yes.
All right, we will adjourn from there.
Recording stopped.